Well, it's my pleasure to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting. Alrighty, we'll move right down to item number four. Four point one, the wellness center personal training fees.
So basically, as we've had four letters from the general public expressing their concern as it relates to the wellness center fees, and we've asked Amber to be here this evening to kind of explain and elaborate on why the fee increased and the amounts, et cetera.
Alright, come on down.
Before we do that, can I just ask some questions?
Sure.
Yes, I have an issue that has brought forward, four letters came forward, and all the concerns are very valid, but we're not quantifying the other side, we're bringing them here for debate, and I think there needs to be a better process for that to go through. So I don't think it's fair, as our organizations say, we're acting on everyone's complaint, because everyone's got a complaint, right? So that's number one. And we're along the same line as the general members are going to bring up. We're having a discussion about a four dollar increase in fees, or the five dollar increase in personal training fees. So we've asked the recreation commission to come up with ideas to make more money. They have a situation where they're taking loss, and we're having a debate about it, right? Because there's been some emails going back and forth to get us around. Number three is that we've got a lot of big problems in town, and we're having a discussion. Everybody's spending 20 minutes now talking about a five dollar increase in fees, and I have a big issue with that, because we've got landfill problems, we've got, what else do we have? So this, to me, is not how we do business, people. Like, there's a way to do things, and how this happened is not it, and it's not fair to staff, it's not fair to anyone. And I think the mistake of previous councils is that they should get in there and manage people, and that's not what I'm about, that's not what I signed up for, and that's not what we're here to do, right? We're here to fix some problems. If we're going to spend the next three years now talking about four or five dollar stuff, and we've got all these bigger problems, we're going to be the same as the last council, despite that we said we're going to do all this stuff. So, go ahead, Amber.
Oh, no, no, nobody, open the floor here, we'll all have a nice discussion. Anybody else have anything to?
Yeah, I agree with Alex. Like, we're not here to micromanage how individual departments are running. We're not, we haven't been elected to go and look at individual potholes, we're looking at all the potholes around town. We're not looking at the little issues, we need to look at the big issues. They need to be able to make that business run, especially the wellness center. It's clearly not making money, and they're doing something to change it. So I feel that they need to do what they need to do, and it's not really, it is our business in the general sense, but it's their business to run it, so.
Counselor Rock?
I believe this issue had come before council previously, and council gave it its blessing to move forward on it, and in support of staff, that's what we do. I agree with Counselor Gibb and Counselor Zelinski on that one. And I think the only real value in the process is whether we learn anything about any subtleties we can do a little bit different to make it better and run smoother, and that's all part of our learning curve, and everybody's, you know, this is a job we're never done. So we'll keep working at it, things will come back. But we appreciate the comments that citizens bring forward, it's important that we hear those things, and just because things don't come to this council table, because we're more worried about lagoons and streets and whatnot, don't take that as it's not important, just recognize that it's not at the top of the list.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, so, yes, technically, we're debating over four to five dollars, but four to five dollars per session, so let's say you buy 10 sessions, that's $50. And I think the issue was the amount of the increase. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people, aside from the people who have written letters, and they don't have a problem with fees going up, because they understand cost of living goes up, things get more expensive, but to them, it was a little bit drastic, and my concern is, is that, yes, it's running a deficit, and yes, we ask them to come up with ways to make more money, and, I mean, for sure, we need to increase costs, but I think it was a little bit much, and my concern is, let's say you have 100 people, for argument's sake, that have personal training, that use the service of personal training, and 50 of them decide that they're no longer going to use it. So 50 people stop using it, and we lose that revenue, so we're going to be risking running a bigger deficit unless those spots are filled.
If you're losing $4 every session, it's not, if you can have 100 extra people, you're still losing $4, so now it's just amplified, right? So you gotta, that's, if they're losing money on each session, so if you lose a customer, sad to say, you're almost better off, right? Because you've stopped the bleeding. So you've got a choice to make. You've got to bring them up, so you're covering your costs, or making 10 cents on every person, or you stop doing it. Like, that's the alternative. Your say, well, we're offering, saying, no, like, issues around personal training fees, each hour, we reduce four to five dollars as an organization. So if we keep losing four to five dollars, we can get 100 more people, and now we're losing $400, right? Or we can bite the bullet and do it.
Counselor Zelinski?
The wellness center was a community decision by previous council to us, and it's something that each and every taxpayer in the town of the paw is paying for in the arm of Kelsey. But I don't think taxpayers themselves should be paying for shortfalls on personal training by each and, people that decide to go through personal training. If there's not a need for personal training, they won't have personal training at the wellness center. And if people can't afford it, I don't think they should be, that the rest of the taxpayers in the town should be subsidizing people taking personal training. So that's just what I feel.
So my question is, you still have to pay the personal trainer, do you not? Like, if they're there for eight hours a day, you're paying them for eight hours a day. So if they're doing four hours of personal training, because you've lost clientele, and you don't have clientele to fill the other four hours, you're still running that deficit, because you're paying them for the four hours that they have no clients, as opposed to them having clients for eight hours a day, and so you're losing a little bit of money, as opposed to losing a lot of money?
Oh, I'm assuming that Amber would be manager, the wellness center would be managing their staff appropriately, so that if they're not personal training, they're just sitting there waiting for somebody to come and jump on some personal training.
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, we don't have people who just train eight hours a day?
We don't have people who are just personal trainers. Basically, we have people who are qualified to personal train, so if we have clients, that's when they do it. If they don't have clients, there's many other jobs and things that can get them to do, because they are instructors as well, so they can teach classes all day. There's many other aspects to it, it's not just training.
Counselor Rock?
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe, counselors, we should let the experts give us some further information on this issue, because I don't, our positions aren't going to change.
Okay, Amber?
Okay, actually, I'll just give you guys a handout. It kind of breaks down everything. The one thing that we did do, community comparisons, we are the cheapest in the north. When you look at Thompson, and Blimfawn, and Swan River, so we are quite cheap. And just to give you, as we're getting kind of right into it, if you go to your third page, it's up to the training, it's our calculations. So basically, it's going to show you there, from 2014 to 15, where we were at and where we've moved up to. What we've done is, if you look at our base cost for our training, is what we've increased. We didn't want to go lower than $32 a session for an hour session, because we wanted to make sure we always have, that it pays for the staff, and we always have a little bit of income coming in, so that's the lowest we went. So we've taken away our 15 sessions, and I think that's part of the complaint that's coming in, is people don't like that that's not an option anymore. So this will just show you what, it was really great for us, because when we took over the wellness center, we had looked at how they came up with fees, and it was really hard to find out how they came up with the fees and what was the rationale, so this year, we looked into what the rationale was, and tried to make it understandable, and something that could easily move up each year without us going at a loss. So that's the calculations. If you go to the next page, that'll give you kind of a little where we are right now. So it has, we compared with Blimfawn, Swan River, Steinbach, Brandon, Thompson, we are cheap. Everywhere else is, like I said, it's $40 to $65 an hour for training sessions. They don't offer half an hour sessions, because it's not worth it for the personal trainer. And then the other options was 10 sessions. So in other communities, you get one or 10 sessions. We have one, three, five, and 10 options right now. We have 66 clients right now. Since October 1st, when our fees went up, we've got 12 more signed up. I have five more that are on top of the 66, that are waiting to be assigned to trainers. And then I have a summer waiting list for Jomer. So I don't feel that we are in a spot where we're not going to have enough people wanting clients, or wanting trainers. We just had a new incentive come up, that if you have never joined the wellness center before, and you were signing up for your first one-year membership, it has to be one year, you would get a half an hour of a free training session. So it was kind of exciting, we had our first person the other day, after she had her free session, she signed up for 10 more. So I do think we have a lot of interest in our personal training right now. The more you do buy, the better your discount, so, you know, if you buy your 10, you're going to, you're getting it at 32 compared to 38 if you're looking at an hour. If you're looking at a half an hour, it goes down to $20. So I don't, I know when we did the budget meeting in the spring, it was very, it was mentioned we needed to increase fees, so that's what we've done. And the suggestion at that time for the cost recovery rendered more revenue. I'm not near cost recovery right now, but I'm at least bringing in some of it, so.
One question before I go to Marjorie. With this increase, you're at cost recovery?
Well, I'm, yes, I'm making, I'm clearing what my trainers make. But not cost recovery in what the billable hours for the building is, because for the wellness center, just to be there, if you look on the very back page, it's $112 per hour. So that would be with all operational.
Yeah, no one's paying $112 an hour anywhere in the world.
So that would just be with my trainers.
So you're talking specific wage?
Yes, just wage. And that's only wage for the time that they're doing the session, that's not preparation to the session, because each personal training session would be packaged personal to the person, so there is preparation and research and everything involved in setting that person up as well, and we didn't factor that into the cost.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. I totally agree with Alex, I totally agree with Counselor, Counselor Zelinski and Brian Rock, who've asked Amber to come up with some facts and figures, and she's brought them to us, and I feel we should let her do her job, and it burned off. They say, oh, well, you know, the fees are just too high, that's just kind of strong rather than us. So I think we should just let her manage, and she seems to, all the numbers are here, the facts and figures are here, and cost recovery is all there.
Counselor Zelinski?
So it costs $608,000 this year?
That was last year's, it was on 14, that's where.
Oh, okay, yep, okay, so six, that's what it cost for 2014, $608,000, okay. So what do we get in memberships, roughly?
In membership fees?
Yeah.
On my budget, it's all. Membership, probably about $265 to $90, I have them all split up, so I didn't have them all in one room together. So I'm going to say about $270.
Okay, so.
Between $270 and $300,000.
So even if you said $300,000, we're basically at half cost recovery?
And that's for memberships?
For memberships, just in memberships, and that's, I'm assuming, where 90% of the revenue for the wellness center comes from?
Yes, majority of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, here's my two cents with it. If someone writes a letter to mayor and council, you bet I'm going to talk to as many people as I can about one letter, four letters, or if five people contact me, you bet, I'm going to, I'm going to find out more information about what they're inquiring about. I met up with a number of people on the weekend, some of them on fixed incomes, who get some personal training, they're not big weightlifters or anything like that, but they're seniors, and they want to have a healthy lifestyle. They don't think they can afford the increase. People who have written letters here, some of them are spending quite a bit of money, they're all spending a fair chunk of money, some are spending quite a bit of money, and I think we need to take them out the word that they're going to go. And so that's, that's, that's lost revenue, when we're trying to not do that. I think that an increase, absolutely, I can't find one person who hasn't said an increase is fair. It's good to have an increase, you should have that on a fairly regular basis, they just don't think that this big whack is, is fair, or that they weren't asked about it, they weren't consulted about it, they weren't advised that it was coming down, it was just arbitrarily done. I do not ever, in a million years, want to micromanage you or anybody else. I'm just not interested in doing that. But when people come and they ask questions, I want to know. I don't care if we're the cheapest in the province, we had a rate, and so we built on that rate, and that's the way it is. It might take us a few years to get up and be equitable with the other wellness centers in the province, but I don't, I don't, the issue is the number of people, and again, this is going to come across like I'm micromanaging, I'm not, but the issue, I believe, is the number of members that are going to this facility. We all heard, when we were out running for election or reelection, that people were upset that they had a bottom-line item on their tax notice, that they had a bill to pay strictly, directly to the wellness center, and they believed they could not afford to go. What the heck am I paying for a place I can't even afford to go to? And so, a long time ago, I suggested that maybe talk to some of the people who don't come anymore. I'm one of them, I've yet to have a phone call. So I'm just thinking there's ways to increase revenues in that place without the big whack coming on the, on the personal training side. These people will go elsewhere, and they'll do it in town. I don't think we want to lose those people as customers, I really don't. So, I'll leave it in your hands, and I think we'll just talk about this, again, come budget time. I don't know what else, I think that's when we would talk about this, but.
The only other time we might talk about it is if some of our fears that I hear around the table were to come true, and in the next 30 days, all of a sudden, our revenue dropped by 50%, then, then I, we know that through Randy, you're going to be talking, then we're going to hear about the problem, but if it's not a problem yet, and we've moved forward on this, then we have to support the process, and let's carry on, and try and help people to understand why we had to do what we did.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair, yeah.
I guess as a direction, then, what is the cost recovery you guys want to see? Because when you look at the other facilities as well, so what kind of an increase, just because, I guess, when I look at the other facilities, and I'll pick the skating rink for example, if we increase their fee, their rental fee per hour, say it has to increase $20 or something, then what happens when you hear from 200 lucky parents?
Well, again, I.
Right, like, if that's, so I guess, I just want to know as a manager, what's the direction of what I should be?
No, I, 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 if I may, I think there needs to be a rate increase continually. Costs continually go up. I've never heard the cost of propane dropping, I've never heard wages go down, I've never ever, once in a million years, heard that. They just keep going up, and so our costs go up, so we have to, we have to get that money back. I'm just saying that if it were me, I might have looked at, yes, an increase in those personal fees, but not as a big whack like that. I think people see that as a big whack. And maybe they're reading the numbers wrong, but they all seem to be saying the same thing. And so, you know.
Their sessions went from $26 a session to $32. So if you're looking at that for a year long, that does.
But I believe they're not allowed to purchase in the quantities that they were before. Right, so, okay.
I think probably the, from reading through the letters, that one of the bigger issues was that they weren't informed, right? And I think that's, that's step number one, is to lessen the blow to people, is they need to be, they need to be let know what's going on. And I think, especially when you start talking about hockey and the rink, those types of fees, you definitely need to, to get that info out. The sooner you get it out about increases, the easier it is for a pill for, a pill for somebody to swallow, because when they're hit up with it just overnight type of thing, I can see some discomfort from some people, for sure, and that's got to be one big issue. But I don't think we should be kicking a dead horse here, and that's kind of what we're doing, when we're giving stuff away for free, that's all we're doing.
It wasn't oversight, it was our.
Yeah, for sure, no, I get it.
We normally do, and I think just we missed it, so I do apologize for that.
No, and that's, it is what it is, but I'm just saying, going forward, that that's step number one, you know, yeah, for sure.
One comment. What I believe is, we have to start biting the bullet, and this has been kind of left over the years, over the years, over the years. When are we going to start catching up? Are we going to catch up today, tomorrow, next year? I think we really have to start biting the bullet, and this is the way it is. There's more to come, but if you want a service, you have to pay for it, if you want a product, you have to pay for it. I had all my suppliers come to me this year, all my prices went up 30%. Now I'm either going to pass it on to the customer or bite the bullet, and that's just the way, that's just the way things are. Unfortunately, we have to raise the prices, they haven't been raised prior years, we have to catch up.
Okay, you're, you're in an entirely different market. The price of coffee went up because the weather sucked.
No, 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 I'm not talking about coffee.
I'm the chair of the meeting, if you'd like to take over his chair, there's an election coming up.
Well, Jim, I think you threw out the bus, right? So we can argue about this all night, I think this process, how we did this, is really wrong.
Well, then we'll have a opportunity to discuss this, we'll change it for you, Alex, we'll get it done.
If we were to have this three days ago, that would have made a difference, right?
Well, I had it over here.
How we handled that with staff, that's our house, right? So we can argue about the fees all night, we're not going to agree.
Okay, thank you very much, Randy, you wanted to speak.
The only reason I just happen to say is that we just finished doubling our fees for garbage. I now just got doubled, I, instead of paying five bucks, I'm paying 10 bucks. So we are slowly hitting everything. Just a reminder, this sounds a little harsh, but we just doubled those fees.
Well, only because of this harsh, and I'll move along.
To meet, yes.
Okay, I'll move along, very good, thank you. Item 4.2, utility debt.
Basically, what this is, is in 2013, we had, the revenues in our utility account weren't as much as anticipated, and we had 35 water breaks rather than the normal 2022 water breaks, so we ran a deficit. In accordance with the act, what we'd have to do is pass a resolution as to how we're going to move forward with paying this deficit. So we will require a resumption of the amount of transferring $182,733 from the utility reserve to cover this deficit. That'll be appearing in the 2016 financial plan.
Any, chat?
I just had a quick question. So we're moving, if we move it from the utility reserve, is that, that's, is that what the utility reserve is for?
It can be used to cover those deficits, yes.
Okay.
We have done that in previous years, now what will most likely happen is if we continue to see a deficit, we will have to carry out a water rate study, which would mean an increase, or a potential increase, or just different ways of doing business as it relates to water, which could mean fixing some things that are maybe costing us.
I remember we talked about a water rate study last year.
Yep.
Was it done?
No, it was not completed.
It wasn't, so are we doing that this year?
We had contacted Way to Go Consulting to assist us with it, however, we gave them other priorities, one of them being the tax issue.
Okay, so we're going to look at that for next year, I guess, or whatever.
Okay, any others to discuss on that? Okay, let us move on, and 4.3, the 2016 interim operating budget.
Basically, what happens each year while we are waiting to complete our budget, we are required by, as under the municipal act, to pass a resolution to permit us to expend funds from our account up until the budget is passed. So we have a resolution, I don't know if you want me to go through each one, it's basically 1.9 million for transportation, 419.8 for environmental health, public health and welfare is 86,559. Recreation and culture services is almost 1.4, fiscal services, 718, and utility operating, 1.8, for a total, or interim operating budget of $10,700.
What is that?
And that's being very generous.
Is that a third of our, this year's budget?
Yeah, it's a little better than a third of your budget. And basically, it's just to cover us in case something happens, because you never know if it could be a huge water break that might cost you tons of money. We've never even come close to expending what's been on here, because we've been pretty fortunate.
Anything else?
I just have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to ask, well, this is interesting, but it's really not much different than we got last year, except there's more numbers and more lines. So I'm wondering, well, what is the plan going forward to prepare and have a budget come to council, so we can begin our deliberations and start working on?
As mentioned in previous meetings, October was our, our time period for staff members to get something to us, we'll be looking at actual departmental budgets and budgets in November. So that's when you're going to be looking at your 2016 budgets, however, we won't have a completed budget, for the simple fact that a lot of our levies, we don't get until February, so we wouldn't have our completed budget until the earliest being May, but we're still going to have our budget ready to go for readings. Our school division levies don't come out until February, so to pass a budget that's inaccurate puts us in a little bit of trouble. So by March, April, we can have our approved budget. Our purpose in moving the budget forward was to not be waiting till May or June of each year to ensure its completion.
So, basically, we're going to do the same as we did last year, we won't be able to empower our workers to, to get things done till maybe April, because we won't have an approved budget?
No, we have an interim budget that we're going to pass.
That lets us cover what we need to.
Oh, okay, then.
And this interim budget forms part of your main budget.
Okay, but remember, this interim budget is just numbers, there's no specifics, there's no background information, therefore, there's no, you know, this says, well, if a phone bill comes in, pay it, if a hydro bill comes in, pay it, if a gas bill comes in, pay it, but it doesn't say, well, go out and do new work.
If council approves it, this money would be included in there, that's why it's that high. If council says, we want you to do this $25,000, we can do it.
The number's fine, but it's just a number. My concern is, and we had this last year, where we ran into times in January, February, March, and we couldn't do things, and things weren't happening, because we didn't yet have authority, because we didn't have our budget through. And I'm, I'm just wondering, why is it other places can get a budget approved much sooner than that, or be holding their hearings in the early January, so that then we get our, Randy and your people, then you can move forward with this, because what, you don't have authority to do things. We've got, the government telling us, we've got money, possibilities and stuff, and yet we're not going to be able to, to work with it unless we figure out a way to get, get an earlier budget than, than April.
Point well taken, but I think the purpose behind this was to have our budget ready to rock and roll for coming into the new year, but I think it would be very irresponsible of us to approve a budget when we don't know the actual figures, because our school budget can make a big hamper on this. Some of our other billings that we know aren't coming in can have a big hamper on this. We don't know the levies that are coming from the provincial assessment branch, we don't know from public welfare what's coming in. Those unfortunately are things out of our control, so I don't honestly, and I can't speak for other organizations, I don't know how they can approve a budget without having actual numbers.
Well, they don't, they don't. They do that in February, March, April, May.
Yeah, I, I don't know, like, are we planning on doing some operational type stuff, so that we know where we're going, I guess, before we get into March and April?
Kind of why we're, budgets a little earlier this year, if you recall, we went through the, the exercise and the process of doing some cost-effective preparation, some of it we've already put into place, some of it does fall par and parcel with the budget, if you could recall from the information I'd sent to you, some of it was budgetary, which has to do with at this table. Have us to give you the heads up for when we have the conversation, because it will affect your 2016 budget.
Yeah, no, for sure, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is, okay, are we going to be having deliberations and meetings before March and April, when we start our, February?
Most definitely, starting November, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to be starting, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure.
You just won't have an actual.
We won't have an actual budget, yeah, but that's fine. That doesn't matter, because we just need to bring in the rest of the numbers, but I'm just.
Because there are still the other things you want to bring in. We're talking about right now, about partial levies and changing the way we do that, that was the whole point of starting this.
Exactly.
And if you recall, they did tell us that we could still hit that time period. But, point well taken, good question.
This is off topic, but how are we moving along with that?
Good, it's in your meeting, but unfortunately, Jody isn't well today, so we'll help you guys review it.
Yeah, we did have an email that came out from him, that.
Provided some recommendations. It was a while back.
I didn't see that.
Okay, it'll be in your stuff.
Okay.
Anything else on this? So we'll have a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. 4.4, Tourism North.
Basically, I've been contacted by the Tourism North rep, and what's going on right now is Sean McKinney from the CDC, used to be the rep for the town of the paw, and because that position is still vacant, they've asked if there was anybody that would be willing to sit on it in the interim until we decide where we want to move forward. There's a meeting that's going to. that's going to be held on Thursday at eleven AM at the Community Futures Building, Cedar Lake Community Futures. So this is the Tourism, Tourism North is specifically to address Tourism North at the Fifty-third Parallel. This has been a group that's been established a couple of years back. And what they do is try and come up with promotional brochures and stuff for the area. So I don't know if someone wants to sit on this. Right now it's council or if you want me to just go to the first meeting on your behalf until we figure out a plan? Or do you want to appoint a member from the table?
I think, I think, my, my personal opinion is just if we could send either you or Jen to the meeting and, because we're, you know, we're pretty close to moving on the CDC thing. So that's just me.
I agree.
I agree with you, Jen.
Oh, stop it.
Whoa, calm down, you two.
Yeah. Uh, I should, uh, four point five then, Military Service Recognition Book.
Basically, we've been asked to advertise in a, in a, well, in the Remembrance Day projects. And we've done this in the past. However, last year we didn't due to budgetary constraints. This is a three hundred and ninety-five dollar advertisement. Staff is suggesting that due to our budgetary constraints that we do not move forward with it again this year for twenty fifteen.
So you're going to get close to that thought process?
It's three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I guess my issue is like last week we approved one for.
Five hundred bucks.
Twelve hundred bucks. So every meeting we're going to have five. We should just chill out until the CDC set up and have a budget.
I agree with you.
We're on a roll here.
That's, is that, any other thoughts?
I don't know. I just feel like it's whatever. Veterans are important.
They are.
I think as, as was pointed out a short while ago, we have some big issues we got to deal with first. And, and as much as we'd like to spend money on some of these smaller items, then in the future, we may be able to get back to it. But today, no, we're better to focus and spend our dollars where we need them.
We just doubled the garbage rates. We got all kinds of money.
Thanks.
Yeah. Four point six, Amala Museum, hometown Manitoba grant.
Basically, what's happening is the museum is looking at putting some beautification around the building like flat zones and stuff. And they are applying for a thousand dollars from the hometown Manitoba program. So what it'll be is matching funds. They're applying for a thousand out of there and they'll put in a thousand of their own, which will be from their twenty sixteen budget. So we require a resolution so that they can make application.
I mean, but my understanding is they have some sort of reserve, if you will.
They have money that she said that they can put in for the twenty sixteen budget.
Right.
And what's happened in the past is if they don't have the money to, to cover their portion or if something changes, if we get the grant, we just say we can't proceed at this time.
Any comments?
So they're asking for a thousand dollars, basically.
No.
They're asking for a resolution that would support them putting in an application. They have to have a resolution of support from council. So in her budget next year, she's going to put in that thousand dollars. And if it doesn't get approved, we just don't move forward.
Okay, so that money doesn't come from the town, does it?
No.
No, we're giving them, we're giving them our support to go get a grant.
The museum has a fund.
Their own budget.
That they can draw their own thousand dollars from to match the thousand dollars they're applying for.
Yeah, but that fund is out of our budget that we give them, right?
Yeah, they present a budget too.
Yeah, they'll present a budget. Part of it will be a thousand dollars towards this.
So it's just the approval to ask for the grant.
No, this is just to make application.
Yeah, this is just, just for the grant. Okay, four point seven, firewood at the airport subdivision.
So I'll give you a short and sweet on this. What happened is, as you recall, we have a bunch of firewood that has kind of stopped piled at the lakefront lots. And this was piled nicely by the contractor when he was doing the road. That timber belongs to the Town of the Paw. We had made sort of a deal with Manitoba Conservation that says, you know what, we have an agreement with you for use of the lagoon and the garbage site. Maybe we'll just give you some wood. It's in kind, like this is just a good opportunity. They decided last year after a couple of years of the wood sitting there that they no longer wanted it. We've got a pile of people going in there and helping themselves and people calling us. And because of the liabilities, we don't necessarily want them going and cutting the timber on our property so that they can cut themselves. So what we're recommending is putting out pretty much a for sale by sealed bid for someone that wants to go purchase all of it and get it off of the property so that we're not having this problem anymore. And at least it's a bit of a revenue. So it'll be a one-time shot revenue. So what I'm asking is just basically, I want a directive from council saying that we want to put out a for sale by sealed bid for the wood out there.
Sounds good.
We don't, we don't need a resolution on that, do we?
No, not until it comes back.
Just, yeah, just, yeah. I can't imagine anybody having an issue with that.
Sell that way.
Okay, four point eight, purchase of screened gravel.
I should have asked the question, but I think this is, we stockpile for our sanding and all our other stuff each year. So basically, because it went over my authority, I have the twenty-five thousand dollar authority, this tender came out to twenty-seven thousand dollars. So this is for the hauling supply and stockpiling of fifteen hundred cubic yards of screened gravel. This was the only tender received and it's for twenty-seven thousand plus taxes. So I'm asking for a resolution of council.
Any discussion on this?
I'm just wondering, is there some, do we have any idea why others didn't tender on?
A lot of times what happens is they're too far. And if the facilities are right here and they are screening and they are crushing gravel here, they can provide a better opportunity. Because some of them won't, won't apply from down south because they automatically know by the time they do the transporting here that they're not even compatible with bidding on the work.
Well, this company's out of Dauphin, isn't it?
Yeah, but they have pretty much set up something here almost full time. So they do a lot of our work in the north.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll bring a resolution forward. Four point nine, payroll and accounts.
Basically, it's for payroll accounts and general accounts in the amount of five seventy-nine, six-one, three forty-seven, and payroll for period twenty and twenty-one in the amount of two thirteen, seven sixty-six. So it's just a resolution for any of their accounts.
And I, maybe I'm not understanding it completely, but I believe we rattled off a whole pile of them we just did last week.
Yeah.
And already two pay periods? Like I haven't even had one pay period. We've authorized six or seven of them. What the heck?
Well, because last week we would have authorized.
You'd have been from the previous.
From the previous month.
Just seems like a lot of pay periods in a very short timeframe.
And you also just made out of your general accounts another check for two twenty-eight, five-one-seven to Kelsey School Division.
Yeah, I know. Just signed that one today. Okay, it just, it just seems like.
And sorry, my last one, and then I go to hit the.
I hear you. Okay, yeah, keep going.
Tax incentive bylaw. Basically, what I'm going to, and I have outlined here that we've had a request. These people are totally in accordance with what our, our bylaw enables. They've had an increase of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. So they are able to go under our bylaw to receive the tax incentive. However, and I would, I would appreciate a resolution. However, at one time, we did talk about this at the table. And Chad, I think you were going to bring forward some suggestions as it relates to the tax incentive bylaw. But the other thing is with that, I'm also recommending consideration for council to give it some thought. And we talked about it. Moving forward, rather than bringing these back to council every time we go through them, as long as they are meeting the needs of that bylaw, I see no reason why we can't move forward.
I completely agree.
I hundred percent agree. Do we just need a resolution on that or do we have?
You would have to change your bylaw because right now your whole application, your form and everything says it comes through town council.
So let's get moving on that.
Yeah.
And so if, if we change the tax incentive bylaw, these people that are approved for under this one, they would stay approved.
It's down to this one. In the previous ones, anybody that was approved under the previous bylaws, all of our bylaws moving forward say those that are previously falling under other bylaws will continue to do so until it's done.
Sure.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, can we be moved into the camera, please?
Be resolved that we now do move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of the panel meeting with Mayor Spott and the Chair to discuss matters in the corner.
I couldn't do it in four years. I couldn't.
And it's not even a year yet.